So let's move on to item number nine. Introduction to Water, Wastewater and Reclaimed Water Rate Design.
Yeah, Mayor, there is a request if we could take a quick break.
I did not see that. Sure. Let's take, um, let's take a 10-minute break. All right, let's get back to it. So, let's have this Water, Wastewater and Reclaimed Water Rate Design presentation. From someone.
Mayor and Members of Council, this is Carol Molesky. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Thank you, Carol. I didn't see you and, and staff didn't look like they were coming up to give a presentation, so I wasn't sure what was happening.
I noticed that too, so I thought I'd jump in. I didn't mean to shock or scare you. But good afternoon, and it's nice to see everyone again, and I hope the weather is better tonight, and that we can get through this, this discussion. Tonight, we are going to be focusing on the introduction to rate design, and we'll go over a few key points. First, what is rate design? We'll dig into what does that mean, and how does it fit within the rate study? We're going to talk about your current rate structures. I've shown you these before in the past, and you're familiar with a lot of them, so we'll just dig into those a little further. We'll also talk about customer usage trends, and how that is influenced by rate structures, and how we can influence them in turn. And then finally, we will have discussion and ask for your guidance on objectives. We're going to be talking about water services objectives for rate design, your objectives, and this Thursday, we're going to be asking the Water Commission for their objectives. Once again, I always like to start with this circle of the rate study tasks. You've seen this many times, and guess what? We're moving further along the, the circle. We are now in task four, discussing rate design. So what is rate design? Rate design is actually a process where we establish and develop alternatives and recommendations for adjustments to your current rate structures. So water, reclaimed water, and wastewater rate structures. This process involves a few tasks. The first is to look at your current rates and your current rate structures, and diagnose how well they are achieving your objectives. Then we develop different rate structures and present those to you. Along those lines, we will develop the charges, so the fixed charges or base charges, and the usage rates that go along with those rate structures for your review. And finally, we calculate customer impacts. That is one of our key objectives, too, is to look at how a different rate structure or the current rate structure will impact your customers. We do this rate design phase or this task to look at your existing rate structures and make sure that they are achieving what you hope to accomplish through the rates, or if they need to be tweaked. We compare the adjustments with the goals of this rate study, as I mentioned, and we want to make sure that there's a clear path for any changes you might want to consider in the future. Finally, we look at the customer impacts, as I mentioned. We want to understand how customers who use your services might be impacted. This chart is just a little bit of an example of what you'll see in the future. These are not your rates or your rate structure, but it just helps us look at what you have versus what the proposed rates and rate structures will be. A new graphic that I'd like to discuss is a, take the whole picture of the rate study and the rate study process. The rate study helps us answer three questions. First, how much revenue do we need to collect from our customers to keep our systems operational? Secondly, from whom do we need to collect these revenues? So that looks at the customers that you serve. And then finally, how do we collect the revenues from our customers? That's where we're going to focus today. But first, that how much question is answered in that financial planning phase that we went through in the fall. That's where we look at your operations and maintenance costs for water, reclaimed water and wastewater. We look at the debt service or those outstanding payments from borrowing, and we look at the capital projects that are planned and how much they cost. We've balanced all of these costs with your financial policies and targets, such as minimum fund balances and other targets. You gave us direction for a rate plan in the financial planning phase for funding the full CIP or Capital Improvement Program back in October. The second question, from whom do we collect the revenue that we need? That is answered in that cost of service or cost of service allocations task and phase. That's what we have been doing over the last few months. It identifies how those annual costs are incurred across your system, and it determines how their customers and your different classes of customers, such as residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, how those customers use your systems and cause the costs in your systems. Part of that, and part of that phase are future costs or growth-related costs. So that was that whole capacity fee discussion we, we have been talking about over the last month or so, and that direction that you gave us on the capacity fees for new connections from last week. So lots of steps up to this point. Today, we're going to introduce you to this rate design phase and how we connect the objectives that you have for your customers and for your rates to rate structure alternatives. STANTEC then takes those rate structure alternatives, develops the rates, and comes back to you for direction. Rates not only accomplish your objectives for how you are, want to influence customers, but it also provides a price signal or a communication to your customers about the value of your water service and the cost of serving them. When we look at rate design, and we focus in on strategies for recovering costs from your customers or recovering those revenues for water, reclaimed water and wastewater, we might look at some strategy examples from past rate studies. We've talked about this quite a few months ago, but some of the goals for water rate design could be to explore how much revenue you collect from your base or fixed charges versus the volume or the unit charges. We could investigate tiered commercial rates right now, and as we'll see, and you probably know, your commercial rates are just a uniform rate across those customers. We might investigate seasonal rates, so those would be rates that would change during the peak season. And we also could look at simplifying your rate schedule by perhaps consolidating or legging other approaches for some of your customer classes. On the wastewater side, wastewater, I think, is a little more straightforward, but we still know that you have quite a few different wastewater rates by specific customer classes or customer types. So you might want to look at grouping customer classes together based on the loadings. Remember, we talked about loadings or the solids. It's often called the strength of their wastewater flow. So you might want to group similar customer types together and simplify your rate structure. We might want to consider monthly base charges for wastewater. Right now, that's strictly on a volume basis for wastewater. And then, as I mentioned, simplifying the non-residential rates might be one of your strategies. We'll go, we'll come back to these in the end after we pick your brains on, on your objectives. And then, of course, estimating your bill impacts. I go back to that continually, because we want to look at the impact on your customers for these different types of strategies. This next slide has some interesting graphics for you to consider. These graphics represent traditional water rate designs in the industry. So you'll find across the United States and even in the state of Arizona, you'll find different water rate designs that accomplish the community's objectives. This first unimpressive graphic is actually a flat rate type of a rate structure or rate design. This is the same price per month for any user. So it's pretty easy, pretty straightforward, but it's just a rate per month for each user. Another type of rate design would be called a uniform rate. And this rate design that we're showing is by customer class. So the price per unit is on the y-axis. The x-axis here is the consumption in units. So what this graphic tells us is that for residential customers, there is a one price for every unit of water used. So the price doesn't vary based on how much water is used, but this customer does pay, this customer class would pay a rate per volume of water used. The same is true for commercial and industrial. They're just a little bit higher for their usage. This is just an example. Another type of rate design is a seasonal rate design. These are very simple graphics, so they could be more complicated, but it's, again, we're looking at the price per unit on this axis and the consumption in units in this axis. But instead of, for a rate that differs based on how much water you use, the rate is higher for usage in a summer period. So if you're using more water in the summer, then you have a higher rate for that unit of use. Two more graphics here. The, the graphic in this lower left-hand corner is often called an inclining block or an inclining tier. This is similar to what you charge your residential customers for water use. As consumption in units increases during a month, the rate per unit goes up. So these thresholds at which the unit rate increases are, are set for your residential customers. This last rate design is probably one of the more individualized rate designs out there for water, and it's called a water budget-based rate. Many communities in California and a few in Colorado have these types of rate structures where each customer has its own inclining block or inclining tier structure. So it is based on their individual water use requirements. So the first block could cover indoor water usage, second block could cover outdoor water usage, and third could be excess use. So, and these can be very complicated, just three tiers, or they can have more tiers. This type of rate design is very data-intensive, and it's a little bit more difficult to implement. But those are the kinds of things that we'll talk about with these rate designs in a few minutes. We have a similar graphic for wastewater rate designs. As I said, wastewater is a little more straightforward. There's not a lot of variation for these types of rate designs. Again, the simplest rate design is just a flat rate per month. So it's simply a dollar amount per month that each customer pays and receives their wastewater treatment. The other two approaches that are common for wastewater rates are called the surcharge rate and the quality-quantity rate. The surcharge rate looks very similar to the flat rate except for there is a volume price per unit of usage. That volume price is set to be covering the costs of normal domestic strength waste. So this is typical residential usage and discharge into the system. We can assume a certain strength of wastewater. Wastewater, again, in strengths and loadings are called, are, in your system, are called biochemical oxygen demand or BOD, and total suspended solids or TSS. So that measure of normal residential or domestic strength is applied to everyone in this surcharge rate structure. However, if you are a industrial user and you discharge waste that is greater than a certain threshold or that greater than that normal domestic strength, a surcharge is applied to that extra waste, and it's a surcharge per pound of waste. Wastewater, wastewater strengths are measured in milligrams per liter, so you'll hear me talking about that a little bit later. That last rate design for wastewater, called quality-quantity, is, looks similar to the uniform rate for the water side, but instead of the, the rates being set just based on usage, these rates are set based on the quality of wastewater or strength of wastewater discharged into the system. So the, the rate for residential, commercial, and industrial customers are set according to their quality or strength of waste. You actually have a combination of these two rate designs in your current wastewater rates. Before I move on to the next section, do you have any questions about these rate designs?
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Matthews?
Carol, and you halfway answered it with your last comment, but is our current water rate structure similar to the uniform rate by class?
It's a combination of the uniform rate by class and the inclining block or inclining tier. You have this rate design for your, for your residential customers, and you have this rate design for the remaining customers.
And then the wastewater is a combination of surcharge and, and quality-quantity?
Correct.
And how do we, Shannon, how do we determine the quality of their, their waste? Like, we don't get it till we get it at the plant, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, there are samples that are collected. So a lot for like our industrial use, that's been predetermined, so they're actually sampling at the site.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you. We'll go on to, the next section is what are our current rate structures? You've seen these charts before, and I'll just talk through them very quickly, but you'll see them again. We're going to be looking at them a lot tonight. Your water rate designer, water rate structure is a two-part structure. So you have that monthly fixed charge, often called base charges, that are charged to your customers regardless of water used. It's a monthly base charge that varies by meter size. You also have inside-city rates and outside-city rates. We had that discussion about some communities that are outside the city that pay a multiplier of that inside-city rate. However, your three-quarter-inch meter is a typical meter size for residential customers, and these customers will pay sixteen, or are paying $16.64 a month on a regular basis. The second element of your water rates is the volume or unit cost. For potable water, you have that inclining tier for single families. So here's the tier structure is a rate per unit of water use, so per thousand gallons. That is $3.44 for the first tier. So that's from usage of zero up to 3,500 gallons a month. If that customer uses greater than 3,500 gallons a month, up to 6,200 gallons, they'll pay $4.45 for those units. The third tier goes from 6,201 to 11,500 gallons, and that's, or at a rate of $6.86 per thousand gallon. And then anything over 11,500 gallons, so your highest-water users would pay $13.72 per 1,000 gallons over 11,500 gallons. That's what a, that inclining block or inclining tier structure looks like. Then those uniform rates for the other classes are, follow. The multifamily units pay $4.42 per thousand gallons for any water used. And then you see the commercial and schools pay $4.69, and so on. Standpipe customers or those water stations, potable water stations, pay the highest rate for that potable water, so it's $10.19 per 1,000 gallons. Remember that we are not considering the water energy rate and the water resource protection fee here in our rate study. Those will come back later in a total bill calculation, but those are outside this rate study.
Excuse me, we have a question from Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding. The monthly fixed charge graphed here is current, what we're currently charging?
Correct.
Okay. And then the water rates down below, is that what we're currently charging?
That's correct.
Okay, it's not what they would be charging. And then my other question is, on the single-family resident, do we know, have we broke it down on average, like a family of four, a family of six, a family of two? Like, what is their average usage? Or is that a, a statistic that we can even pull, because everybody showers differently?
Mayor and Councilmember Matthews, we could estimate what that might be, given some statistics on gallons per capita water use, but the, the information on people per individual customer households in the city is not something that, at least, we as a, a STANTEC don't track that.
So another way to look at it would be, do we know how many users in the single-family resident customer base? Like, what's the, is the biggest percentage tier two, just overall, or?
It's, to answer your question, we have a slide a little bit later, but the, the biggest percentage is actually in tier one.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question, probably for staff. I'm, do we know how many out-of-city water customers we have?
Mayor, we don't have that number. I don't know if STANTEC has it, but we can definitely get that number and get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go on to the next rate schedule, which is the reclaimed water rate schedule. This should look a little familiar, because it mirrors the water rate schedule, and for good reason. Your reclaimed water rates are set to be a percentage of your potable water rates. Reclaimed water customers, though it's not shown here, pay the same monthly fixed charges by meter size as potable water. So if you have a three-quarter-inch reclaimed water connection, you will pay sixteen, you are paying $16.64 per month for that service. However, if you are a private residential account with a reclaimed water connection, those same tiers are priced at a lesser percentage. It's not 100% of the potable water rate. It varies across the tiers and across the customer classes. But based on the city code, you have set these reclaimed water rates to be a percentage of the potable water rates. So you'll see that these are lower than the potable water rates. On the sewer side or wastewater side, you'll also notice another difference. There is no base charge or fixed monthly charge for sewer customers. All your sewer customers pay a uniform volume rate per 1,000 gallons of wastewater. And you'll notice that residential, for single-family, multifamily, are grouped into this, this row and pay $5.35 per 1,000 gallons. That's because they're assumed to have that normal domestic strength waste. Your non-residential customers are grouped according to the type of customer that they are. So whether it's a car wash, a laundromat, a commercial customer, which is a, a wide group, restaurants, et cetera, each of these customers is assumed to have a certain strength of wastewater discharging to the system, so they have a different rate. There is an asterisk for this single-family type of customer, because water usage is, is typically used to calculate wastewater flows, because wastewater flow meters are not typical. Be a little gross, but for larger industrial users, there are a few flow meters out there. But for residential usage, the estimated wastewater discharge is based on your winter quarter-average water usage. So that's all your usage billed in the winter months, December through March. That's a proxy for how much wastewater is getting returned to the system. So in the summer months, we're assuming that much of the water use is outdoors, outdoor use. So that's why residential sewer flows are based on winter water usage. Your non-residential customers and multifamily customers are billed wastewater according to their water meter readings. Some of your customers have special agreements with the city, so that it's not, for example, a, if you had a, a soft drink bottling corporation, that water use would be used in their product. So some of these larger users have agreements so that their flow is measured differently. The second part of this table are those surcharge rates for higher-than-domestic strength waste. You currently have surcharges for that biochemical oxygen demand, BOD, and total suspended solids or TSS, that's over the residential amount. So it's, again, it's a price, it's additional cost that these customers pay you. There are even higher surcharge rates for a double or triple the amount for highest usage. This is one of the components of your rate schedule that is unusual for the industry.
Excuse me.
Next, I'd like, oh, yes.
Excuse me, Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This method that we currently use of measuring the wastewater during the winter, or, or the, measuring the, the clean water, the drinking water in the winter, and assuming, you know, that's more related to how much goes down the toilet or the sink, actually makes a lot of sense if there's a person living there all year long. But if someone has a place, maybe they live in Phoenix, and they just come up here in the summer, and they're not here in the winter, it would seem that they're getting off at scot-free on their sewer expense, because if you say they weren't here in December, January, February, and March, then their flow would be zero. And yet, they would be here in the summer and using our sewage system all through the summer. So I think that's a little bit of a discrepancy that we can come back to later. The other, could you go back one more slide? I have an unrelated question. I was involved, last time we set water rates, which is what, 10 years ago? I was on the Water Commission. And I distinctly remember that the, the Water Commission and Council were going to charge a higher rate than what's shown here for golf courses, but there was some heavy lobbying of the city council, and they got their rate reduced. But the analysis of the Water Commission and our consultant and the, the council at the time was that that $1.81 should be higher than that. So just a little historical footnote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Councilmember McCarthy, would you like me to respond to the, the comment about those users that, for wastewater rates that are not present in the winter?
Yes, please.
Customer service, let me know that in, for those types of accounts, it is assumed that their average winter water usage is, is 500 gallons per month. So they do pay a minimum for that, for the months that they may not be here. So for the year, their annual wastewater flow is based on that 500 gallons per month minimum.
I appreciate that. I wasn't aware of that.
Do you have any comment as to Councilmember McCarthy's statement about the golf courses and the fee? Not in terms of what happened last time, but just in terms of what you see working with various communities and, and water rates associated with golf courses?
Mayor, I do, and when we have worked in the past with some communities that have golf courses, and with any water rate study, we look at usage patterns and usage trends. And typically, this is labeled off-peak. If there's no, if there isn't a contract for the rate, we look at if we look at off-peak service, the customers are usually filling ponds or taking water, not during peak periods of usage, so that's a little more challenging. But that is one thing we are looking at. We're looking at the peak usage patterns of all of your customer classes. But we're also looking at the current code for what is established for setting the reclaimed water rates. And I do have the code handy. And for these off-peak tier-one customers, it says that these customer rates shall be set at 87% of the commercial reclaimed water rate. So that is in your code, and that would be something to consider, that that percentage is laid out in the code.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I note that our wastewater charges are based solely on volumes. And that's completely contrary to the philosophy we use on potable water. In other words, we charge a fee to maintain the pipes and everything, use no water or whatever. So I kind of question if that is rational. It might make sense to structure the wastewater charges in a way similar to the potable water and have a base fee because we have to maintain those sewer lines every day of the year, even if they never get used. So just a thought to keep in mind as we talk through this today or later. Thank you.
And thank you. That's exactly what we'll be asking you to tell us. Right. Our next section that we are going to review is direction from October regarding the future. So for the next five years, that's the subject of this rate study, what are we looking at for needs from operations and maintenance expenses, from your base budget, your debt service forecast, and the full capital improvement program projects that will satisfy your basic needs, your renewal and replacement projects, and those projects identified from your master plans? This is an excerpt from one of the slides that we discussed back in October, and it represents the forecast of rate increases under that full funding of your CIP scenario. So that would be 15% increase in each of these five years on the water side. If we were to take this direction and not change your rate structures or your rate design at all for wastewater, that we were just to apply this increase across the board to your current water rates, we arrive at this table. These are a lot of, a lot of numbers. Essentially, we took your existing 2024 rates, the fiscal year 2024. What's being charged today? There's that $16.64 base charge for a three-quarter inch meter. And we apply a 15% increase to that charge. We apply that each year so that by the end of these five years of rates that change, this doesn't include the 2024 amount, though. That change is an additional $14.33 a month. That would be applied to a customer's monthly bill.
Carol, can I, my apologies. Councilmember McCarthy has a question about your previous slide.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, you said I had. That's correct. She already answered it. So had, past tense. Thank you.
Oh, good.
Councilmember Matthews has a question.
So on that last slide that Councilmember McCarthy was referencing, and maybe you said it, and I was trying to toggle over to this presentation because what was in the agenda packet had different percentages. So if you said it and I missed it, I apologize. On this full CIP option, the 15% increase in what we need in revenues equates to, is the next slide showing the dollars that that 15% represents? Or how do we know what that is?
It is. If you were to keep your rate structure the same and not change anything regarding your base charge structure or design or your rate for the volume, we just applied that 15% increase to every one of these rates. So $16.64 with a 15% increase next in fiscal year '25 would be $19.14. And then the same applies for the unit rates, the volume rates. So for this tiered rate structure, a user who's in that tier one right now paying $3.44 per thousand would pay $3.96 per thousand. That's the 15% increase. It's just applied for every one of these rates that you currently charge.
Thank you.
The math works out to be that if you need that 15% increase in revenue in fiscal year 2025, all things being equal, we apply that 15%, and this would be the rates that would result. We wanted to show that each year so that you could see over the five years of the plan where that would end up. And we do this process for reclaimed water and wastewater. The reclaimed water direction from October was the the actual same percentages as wastewater, assuming that you still want to go with or follow the code in terms of applying that percentage of potable water rates when you're setting your reclaimed water rates. So assuming those same percentages that the reclaimed water rates represent, we would increase those by 15% as well. I want to make a comment here that even though it says the full capital improvement program alternative with this funding, what happens on the reclaimed water side, and this was quite a few months ago, so it might be fuzzy, but the full capital improvement program costs for reclaimed water would not be able to be funded under this scenario. Your operations and maintenance expenses would be covered for the reclaimed water system, but that capital improvement program would have to be scaled back in order to stay within that code's limits of what your reclaimed water rates could be. We followed that same process for reclaimed water. And again, the base charges or the fixed monthly charges would look the same as in the water rate structure. And then here for reclaimed, again, we applied 15%. We did not address any of these levels of the fees. We just said, let's keep the same rate structure. Let's add 15% each year.
Carol, sorry.
Yes.
Can you go back to the other slide? So I'm not seeing a different tier for outside-of-city limits on this slide?
Mayor, that's correct. In order to fit everything on this slide and not include too much information, we just kept inside city. And I think we did that for here, too. Correct, yeah. We did not include the outside-city rates. But since the outside-city rates are a function and a multiplier of inside-city, you would get a similar schedule. Any other questions before I move on to wastewater?
I don't see any.
Following the same process, if we're looking at the direction from the fall, the full capital improvement program funding level for wastewater would result in two years of 25% increases and then dropping down to 15%, 10% in 2028. And then the last year in this plan would be a 5% increase. We had to suggest some reorganization or deferral of some of your capital improvement projects for wastewater in order to keep this type of a forecast. And we suggested with this scenario, there would be more financing with debt or more borrowing in this scenario. But given this scenario, the sewer rate schedule, again, no change in the rate structure itself, just with a 25% increase applied for 2025 and 2026, and then the remaining increases applied. You'll see how a $5.35 per thousand gallons charge for residential customers changes over time. And we apply those same percentage increases. And again, this is the same rate structure. Now, this is not to say that this is what will be the end result because when we go forward, we know that there are different alternatives. And Councilmember McCarthy also already mentioned having a base charge for wastewater, a potential review of a base charge. If you collect revenue from a different rate element in your rate design, then you could collect less from the other element. You know, our total amount of revenue that we need is the same. It's just how you collect it is accomplished through that rate design process. Before we talk about alternative ways to do this, we thought you might be interested in going back to a municipal services bill and looking at these two examples. You might remember these sample materials that your water services team put together. On the left is a commercial bill, and this is for a hypothetical customer using 51,750 gallons in a month. All of these elements appear on a customer's municipal bill. We are only looking at water and wastewater charges. These don't have reclaimed service. So we're just looking at water and wastewater. The same thing applies for the single-family residential bill. And this particular customer uses a little over 4,500 gallons a month. So these bills were taken and broken down into each of the components. We'll look at residential first. So if we're looking at a customer, that a typical residential customer using 4,550 gallons in a month, we know that they pay several components on that municipal utility services bill. So these in yellow are the ones we're talking about today in the rate study. The other shades of gray are other fees and charges that are on a bill. But we wanted to include them so that you could see a total bill. Another caveat here is this is simply adding that increase that we talked about without changing the rate structure. Here is our usage in gallons that is used to calculate the bill. Fiscal year 20, or current fiscal year 2024 has the different rates per unit. And then we look at the total dollars that appear on the bill. If you match these dollars against that sample utility bill, they should match. So that in total, today, a customer using forty-five, a little over 4,500 gallons a month of water will pay for its total bill $101.90. We're labeling this first approach with no change to the current rate structure as alternative one. And don't worry, we don't have any other alternatives tonight, just this one. And for the proposed change in the bill, if you're adding those increases that we talked about a few minutes ago, for the next fiscal year, we're looking at a total bill of $112.87. So in the first year of this rate study, if we just applied across-the-board increases, it's about just shy of $11 increase in a monthly bill for this type of customer. Fast forward to 2029, we're projecting these yellow items. Now, the energy surcharge, these other, some of these fees will stay the same, but some of them might change. We tried to project what they might be, like the stormwater fee we know is on a schedule. We know that the state and local taxes are affected by the total bill. What we're showing, though, is projecting a draft estimate of the same bill in 2029 of $150.19. So that is about $48 increase from what they're paying today. So in five years, that same bill would go up by $48. Do you have any questions on this? There's a lot of information on this.
No, thank you.
We show the same example for commercial customers. So in this commercial customer, and I do not believe your bill, or excuse me, your packets had this full example, so we can make sure that you get the full example. But on a commercial side, when you have a customer using 51,750 gallons of water a month, their total bill today would be $994.92. Given those projections that we just showed you, a bill in 2025 would be about $128 higher a month. And then that same bill in 2029 would be about, just about $660 higher. But that's after five years. But in review, we just looked at how a customer's bill would be projected to change if you did nothing to their rate structure. So water and wastewater structures stay the same. We'd like to take a look, then, at this current rate structure, or these current rate structures. Have they affected customer usage trends over time? Or what kind of observations can we make when we look at usage over time? I'd like to ask Erin to come up and speak to some of the water usage trends that she's noticed.
Thank you, Carol. So we've seen this graph several times in the past. We're showing the rise in population over time, looks like from 1980. In purple, from left to right. And from left to right, the blue line is our gallons per capita. So our total population and the water use spread across the total population and an overall decline since 1990. And until 1990, we had one rate for, I don't know if it was, I think it was a volumetric rate coming into 1990. But commercial, residential, everyone paid the same. And with the increasing water per capita coming into 1990, Council actually adopted a tiered rate for residential. That was the first kind of rate design that I'm aware of around that time, rate design change. That coupled with a toilet rebate program in 1991. And we established a water conservation program in 2003, following a significant drought. And bringing online the reclaimed water distribution system in 1993, we keep having this declining trend in water use. And starting in about 2007 or '08, we were able to break down the components of residential gallon per capita, the non-residential, and what we call our non-revenue water. That's like our system leaks. But if we divide all of that by the population, we get the individual components of gallons per capita, the residential, non-residential, and the non-revenue water. And you'll see that lower blue bars, those are declining over time. And then the orange bars are sort of also declining over time. And non-revenue water, we can't stop all system leaks, so we're always going to have some leakage. But we actually have a non-revenue rate that's consistent with the Arizona standards for the big cities. We meet that criteria.
Erin?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris has a question.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember?
I think you're probably going to get to-
I think you're probably going to get to this answer, but I'm gonna ask the question anyway or make the comment. So because we're doing such a great job at conserving our water, we're going to continue to pay higher prices, correct? Because we do such a good job of, and I'm not asking us not to conserve water, so don't hear that. But is that what we, I mean, is that kind of where we're going to end up? Over years, is that our rates are going to continue to increase because we're not using as much water?
Mayor, Councilmember Harris, that's an excellent observation because to make up that difference in maintaining the system, we're using less water, so we're paying a higher unit cost, or we have to pay more. The interesting thing is several cities have done an analysis called the avoided costs of conservation. Because we've been conserving, we have pushed off the need for larger infrastructure projects. Had we not been conserving like we have been, we may have triggered Red Gap Ranch already. We didn't have other options. So we would be paying a lot more per month than that difference because of conservation, if, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but, but follow up to that. The pipes are still 30 years old, the sewer system still, so it doesn't matter how much water we use or don't use. The age of the infrastructure still needs to be dealt with, right? So it doesn't make any difference how much water, if, you know, if, if pipes deteriorate after 30 years, it's just 30 years, right?
Correct. There is the, the basic maintenance of the system that we all pay for. But it's, we would be paying maybe another $10 a month currently because we've conserved so much that we've pushed off a Red Gap Ranch-type project, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. And I don't know if Director, if you want to try and explain it differently.
So we save on Red Gap Ranch, but we still, do we, do we, do we pay more for other things? You know, because, so let's just forget about Red Gap for right now, just, just. But so do we, do we keep paying more for other infrastructure, other, other stuff? Because I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around some of this.
Mayor, Councilmember Harris, no, I, I think it's a great point, and it, it is kind of hard to wrap your head around, but, but I think you're right on track. And I feel the best way to frame that is again, to, to look at, there is, there's multiple costs that we have. And I think what you're alluding to, regardless of how much water you use or don't use, there's your fixed cost that costs the same if you don't use any water. There's your variable costs, and those do change. So things like chemicals and electricals are prime examples, meaning if you, as a community, use less water, we consume a less electricity, and there would be a less cost. But the fixed costs, like you're talking about maintaining that infrastructure, right, what we pay for our buildings, what we pay for our salaries, like those don't change. So those costs do go up, and they're not affected by the use. But so to your point, yeah, we're using less water and the costs do go up. That is true, and the graph demonstrates that. What it doesn't demonstrate is if the use continued to go up, right, those costs would also escalate. So this is, is kind of painting a picture of where we're at currently. But I think to kind of frame, to frame your question about, do we use less water, the cost is going to go up? I would say, yes, it is, mainly driven because of the fixed costs and escalations, those costs will still go up. But using less water does save you money when it comes to those variable costs like chemicals and electricity.
So then, if I'm a, you know, a resident rate payer, whatever, I'm probably going to ask, well, we're, we're so good at saving water, and we're, we've, we've got the status as being a water conservative, why am I paying more? So are we going to tell people why they might be paying more? I mean, are we going to explain that? Because you just explained it to me, so I get it, okay? But are we gonna make that part of our conversation when we go out there, somebody?
Yeah, I think I definitely am now, based on that. But I, yes, no, I, that is part of the conversation, yes.
I don't see any additional questions yet.
Carol, I think we're on to the next slide.
Okay, thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
We have a few more slides that look at trends in customer usage and trends in customers. If we just focus on water system customers for now, we see that from 2021 to 2023, we've seen a 1.4% increase in total accounts. So overall, an increase in total accounts. And you can tell by the values that you have the most number of accounts in, in the single-family category. As a contrast, and we, that reflects what Erin was just showing us, for that same time period, we're looking at a decrease of 10.4% in total water usage from the gallons used in 2021 to 2023. So that demonstrates that, that increase in customers, but conservation impacts. Another way to look at those characteristics is to take that 2023 usage and break it down by month and break it down by customer type. So the, the lowest group here on the, on the bar, the stacked bar, is commercial. We have July through June, and the, the Y-axis is, is usage in thousands of gallons. So we see that the commercial customers are using pretty consistently over the, the different months, there's a little bit of peaks that we see in July through June. This is important because this gives us information about who's causing those peaking costs for, for us to focus our attention. The yellow group is the landscaping or lawn meter group. So of course, the consumption is typically during the summer periods. There's a tiny bit here in the winter months, but the majority of metered, excuse me, lawn meter usage is in the summer periods. Gray is multifamily, and if we had, it's a little bit difficult to see here because of the height of the bars. But multifamily usage in general, month over month over month, is very consistent. And that is likely because they have some separate lot, landscape meters that measure their outdoor water use. Green is institutional, it's not very, it's pretty consistent. And then the darkest bars are the single families. And again, if you could stack them next to each other, you would see that the majority of the, the, the height of the bars of the consumption is in those summer months because we are looking at indoor and outdoor water usage here. So it's very, very telling and very typical of a, of irrigation usage or landscape usage in the summer months and lower water use in the winter months. I mentioned that we were going to look at the, another characteristic of your residential customers, and Councilmember Matthews asked about this. The majority of your bills that you issue for residential customers are for usage that is between 0 and 3,500 gallons a month. So it is very difficult to translate this into accounts or households because one account may have five months of usage in tier one, but then some other months, they may have usage in higher tiers. So it's difficult to narrow it down to a customer account. So this time, we're just looking at bills. The boxes represent your tiers. So tier one, 0 to 3,500 gallons. Tier two is 3,501 to 6,200, and, and so on. You'll notice that there, there are some, quite a few bills that are issued greater than 11,500 gallons. So that would be the highest users that you might want to focus on. Further demonstrating the trends of reduced usage is in the gray bar above, that in 2020, the average usage per bill was 4,480 gallons. And in 2023, it was 3,824. Now, we have some pandemic impacts in the middle here. So probably just characteristic of what was going on across the country, but that usage has come down. One of the things that we use this type of graphic for is to see if your tiers are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So are these tiers acceptable? You know, does it seem to characterize and group customers appropriately for the residential usage? And I would say that by looking at this, you could tweak these tier thresholds slightly in an alternative. But for the most part, they, they look like they're accomplishing what they are set to do. On the reclaimed water side, we, you only have, you know, you have fewer reclaimed water customers because of the limited supply. Excuse me. So we just wanted to show, you know, in comparison, the residential and non-residential classes. My apologies, my throat is getting very dry. Wanted to show the residential and non-residential usage and accounts.
Do you need a water break?
I might. Could you excuse me for one minute, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. When we were talking about conservation and Councilmember Harris made some comments about, you know, well, why are we, our rates going up when we're all conserving and doing such a good job? Well, we might include, and I don't know if this is practical, but an estimate, tell people an estimate of what the bill would have been if we hadn't had conservation. So, and then I'll make a comment about my comment of earlier this evening when I was saying that, you know, on wastewater, we didn't have a, what do you call it, the fixed charge. In a way, we kind of do, because as she pointed out, we assume, for we, in the calculation, assume that people are using at least 5,000 gallons in the winter months, even when their meter might be turned off. So that kind of addresses the issue that I brought up before. But maybe, you know, just a thought. I see smiles on faces, that's a good sign.
Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, just a correction, it's 500 gallons a month, which equates to about $2 to $3 on sewer versus 5,000 would be
That would be a big deal.
More like $30 a month, I think.
Yeah, okay.
And Carol, we're prepared. If you'd like me to take over for a little while and give you a break?
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you, Mary, members of council. I'm so sorry, I've got a, I've got something lozenge. I think I'd be okay.
Mayor, I had a comment.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. I, go ahead, take another sip of water there. Maybe I'll join you. Yeah, I, I just wanted to add to the mix here on this observation that was made a, a few minutes ago. I, I'm not sure it's correct to couple those two observations. Yes, we have conserved water, and yes, our rates are going to go up. I don't think it's necessary or even appropriate to make that connection. It's, it's not a causal relationship. I would simply say that we have done a really good job of conserving water, and we're going to be spending more money on water because water is more expensive now. I think it's really that simple. I think we overly complicate and create controversy where it actually doesn't exist if we, so we have to be careful how we frame what's going on. And we have to be very careful about what causal relationships we, we highlight or that we choose to draw. I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Erin, one thing that has helped me through this conversation today, and I know I asked you specifically for those draft copies, breakdown from, you know, how much in replacement cost for aging infrastructure versus capacity projects and stuff. And that would be, I don't know if, once you guys finalize the numbers, if you're going to send that out to all of us. But it's helpful in that question that Councilmember Harris said, even if we are conserving, those old pipes need to be replaced, and some of those aging out systems and stuff. And if we have a fact sheet like this, it would really help us to respond to those inquiries because we don't live it every day, and so we're like, I don't know why. So I, hopefully, I know this was a draft, and you sent it specifically to a request that I had this morning. But I think it'd be really useful for the council to get it as well and help us answer our own questions and the questions of the constituents.
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, what Councilmember Harris has hit on, and what you've hit on, and Vice Mayor, in some communities, the cost of conservation is a big topic because they are asked to pay more. Seattle, that was a big concern, I remember about five years ago or so. And then we have these studies, like these avoided cost studies. And I feel we can draw from those and just provide a fact sheet on, on, on what it means because there's a, a real positive to conservation, but I think it helps to put it into the big picture. So.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes, Mayor, Council, I'm going to respectfully disagree with my esteemed colleague, Vice Mayor Aslan. I think that we have to be totally upfront and out there with our community and with our public and with our constituents. And I don't think that we should, you know, not tell people that we've got some fixed costs, folks, and we're doing a really great job at conserving. But those fixed costs are not going to stop. I think we have to tell people that, because when we dance around it, then people accuse us, well, what are you hiding from us? Why aren't you telling us the truth? Are you really being transparent? So while I hear what my colleague is saying, I still disagree respectfully that we ought to be out there telling people what's what, you know? And I think that it's okay to tell people that our costs are going to go up because we've got fixed costs. Salaries are going to go up, you know? Insurance goes up, all the stuff that, that runs a city. So I don't think that's a negative to, and I do think that it's a cause, you know, effect. So anyway, that, that's my two cents for that. So thank you.
City manager?
Well, thank you. It's a great discussion, you know? Back to the comments made about how we message the outcomes of our very successful conservation measures. As we saw Erin's graph from a while ago with the increasing population and the decreasing water usage per capita, the outcome of that is, you know, over three decades since we've implemented those measures, close to three decades, we have seen, we have not seen a rising use in water in the aggregate as we otherwise would have seen with that population increase. It has really leveled off, and per capita, and Erin, you can correct me on this, but I think our per capita usage, at least residentially, is like 94 gallons per person, is, is really, really low and quite competitive. So absent those conservation measures, our water usage would be way higher than it is. Am I correct in making those statements?
Very close. Our total is 90, that is everything included. Our residential is under 50 gallons per capita.
Okay, total is overnight, yeah, and the residential, so even more remarkable. But yeah, that graph is very telling as, as we see the two lines crossing and going in, in both an upward and downward trajectory. It, it does tell a great story. Thank you.
Yes. And may I add to that, that our Water Conservation Strategic Plan adopted by City Council in 2020, our target GPCD rate is 80 gallons per capita without giving up our quality of life. And the target, the main focus to get to that 80, the target is outdoor water use. So Tamra's team is working hard on that while keeping the programs we have for residential going. going, our our rebate programs for residential and commercial. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions or comments, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I've recovered. I'm going to just talk very briefly about wastewater system customers. Again, we can look at the number of accounts currently and the wastewater flow assumed here. Residential customers represent the largest contributors to your wastewater flow, of course, and you do have some larger users that contribute quite a bit. But what is interesting about wastewater system discharges is the assumed strengths or that loadings that we've talked about by customer class that form the basis for your current rates. Residential and multifamily assumed concentrations for biochemical oxygen demand or BOD and total suspended solids, TSS, in milligrams per liter are 250 milligrams per liter for each. Compared to that typical residential strength or domestic strength, we have car washes that have lower strengths in both categories. We have laundromats that are lower, but then you start to see that different assumptions are used for commercial hotels and motels. Restaurants have quite high loadings assumed, industrial laundries. And then we have three types of manufacturing kinds of customers that have unique concentrations. The reason that I'm spending time talking about this is because these are, these are typical concentrations that are found throughout the industry of wastewater rates. And they've been in place for quite a while. Some of these based are based on samplings, as was mentioned earlier. But some of these are close enough that you might consider simplification or consolidation. And that's one of the things that we'll talk about in a minute. Any questions about this before I move on?
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, I noticed before that we had a category for ice cream cone manufacturing and their charge was way higher. I presume that's because their BOD was probably higher. Is it?
That's correct.
So that makes sense. Thank you.
That's also, by the way, a characteristic of that quality quantity type approach of rate structure, that quality or the higher strength pays for more per unit of use. All right, so now we're on to another section of our discussion on rate design. And this is that objective section where we are going to be asking for your your input. In your packets, you had a memo that you probably all read and loved. This is a pricing objectives approach that we use in the industry to determine what's important to you, and it helps us frame the alternative rate designs that we're going to going to be analyzing further. The reason that we do this is because we want to be able to tie your goals and objectives to these rate designs that we bring to you. We want to make sure that we're meeting certain characteristics of what you're looking for. We often categorize these types of objectives or these criteria into the categories you see here: revenue-based, legal, equity, or sometimes you hear fairness. I like to use the term proportional, customer impact, and administration. And all of these have to do with rate designs and and the rates that you charge to your customers. We're going to go over each of these in detail, so I'm only going to just spin through them really quickly. We have two criteria for revenue: sufficiency and stability. There's only one for legal, so one criterion called legal defensibility. There are different types of equity or proportionality. They are between classes, within a class, and between existing connections and new connections. Then for customers, from a customer perspective, we look at affordability, conservation, and bill stability. And finally, administration is from the utility perspective. So from your customer service perspective, how difficult it is to administer, how complex it is, and actually, this is also from the customer perspective, how complex is it? And then is there public and political acceptance? So I'm going to dig into each one of these. The first set of objectives is revenue objectives. We have two. Revenue sufficiency means that the rates that you calculate from the rate structures recover the full cost of service each year, assuming all things being equal with your accounts and your customer usage. Revenue stability means that the rates that are generated with the rate structure minimize fluctuations in your revenue due to usage, weather, or other factors, such as customers who may not be there in the winter months. The when we're setting rates and when we're suggesting rate alternatives, we will make sure that it generates sufficient revenues. This type of criterion is something that is a given. So we won't, we're going to take it off the table right now because it is a given. We are going to make sure that what we calculate generates sufficient revenues, all things being equal. So when we focus on revenue stability, we can look at a few rate design examples. These are the very basic levels of your rate elements, and that means that you are, and we talked about your fixed costs versus variable costs. But we can look at a rate design where a large component of your revenues are recovered from that base charge or that fixed monthly charge. This results from increasing that base charge component to recover more of your fixed costs. The total amount of revenue that you need to collect is the same. That means that if the more revenue you recover from your base charge, the less revenue you need to recover from your volume charges or your unit rates for usage. So this section or this component is smaller in this approach. We can contrast this with an approach where you collect fewer revenues from your base charge, so smaller, smaller base charges. They may just recover billing costs and customer service costs and but you recover more from your volume charges. So your, that means that your volume rates are higher in recovering a larger component of revenues. This is a very basic starting point, and we know that whenever you decide on a on a criterion or a rate design approach, there are some competing objectives. As we just discussed, we conservation is one of your focuses. So this type of a rate structure where a lot of your revenue comes from the base charge, where a price signal for the amount of usage is relatively low, that may not inspire as much conservation as this type of approach. So we understand that there are some competing objectives, but this is just one example of where you can vary how much revenue you recover from your base charges versus your volume charges through how much you, how high you set those base charges.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, briefly, I'll note that when I was on the Water Commission 10 years ago, that the Water Commissioners were pushing for, I guess it would be the right-hand model. In other words, focus most of the income based on usage amounts. But staff pushed back and say, well, but we need stability so that we can, you know, predictably have enough to pay for our needs. So this is a, that's kind of the history of city flagstaff on this issue. I think we kind of came up with a pretty good compromise, the way it's set up right now. Thank you.
And Mayor and Councilmember McCarthy, thank you for that comment. I will mention that by policy, the base charge revenues on the water side are to recover a minimum of 25% of your revenue requirement. So that that level has been set, and they actually are recovering, we calculated a little bit, a little bit higher than that. So that is one of the, it sounds like it was part of the objective from the last rate study. And it just as a comparison on, not to forget about wastewater, we know that the base charge revenue component is nothing on the wastewater side. And so legal, the legal category, legal defensibility is the only criterion that we have in this category, and it is, the definition is that the rate structure complies with state and national laws and guidelines. Well, we would not suggest a rate structure that did not comply with your state and national guidelines or that it was illegal. So this is also a given. Our next category is equity or proportionality. We have those three criteria. Inter-class equity is equity or prepared proportionality between different classes of customers. So between residential and commercial or institutional and manufacturing. So those types of proportionality is the focus for this type of equity. And it looks at recovering costs proportionally across each customer class.
Councilmember Harris.
Okay, so just bear with me for for a minute here. So in the equity category, when I, when I see the word equity, my mind goes in a lot of different directions. So let me give you a scenario. So I live in a, not me personally, but this is the example, I live in a 50-year-old house. I've lived in that house for maybe 50 years. I'm living on a really fixed income because I retired from a job that really didn't pay a whole lot. So I have appliances in my house, water faucets, toilets, sinks, you know, whatever, that are not efficient. So my bill is going to be higher because I'm using more water, more whatever. Am I on the right track so far? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, I'm looking at whoever's in the room. So it would, it would be who of us to try and figure out how we get people to that efficiency level so that their bills are lower because, and that's in that equity category. Am I, does, does that make sense to anybody else other than me? I don't know, I'm, I'm just asking, I, you know, it's, I don't. So that's where, in my mind, when I see the word equity, that's kind of where I go. Is that a part of this understanding or process or anything? Does that, am I, am I on the right track? Does that make sense?
Councilmember Harris, in in terms of rate setting, equity in this context is more proportionality rather than efficiency or affordability. So that, the the equity in terms of income and ability to handle leaks and and inefficient appliances, I think is more of a customer assistance type program focus, whereas, and and now that I listen to you, I think the word or the term equity in this context is is not what you think of. I'm not sure if anyone else had that same thought as you're asking.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share what I learned not too long ago and and made the shift. Our city, I don't know if it's our water department or sustainability, but gives out free showerheads, water conservation and filters on your faucet, and they have a really nifty device that they can turn on your water faucet and tell you how much, how many gallons you're using in a certain amount of time and then how much she'll save. And they're giving this, all these things free to people. I don't know if it's for consumers. I got it at my hotel to convert everything over to water conservation, and it really made a big difference to help in that water usage.
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, that is our Water Services Water Conservation Program, and that was a priority in the last rate study. An outcome was, what if, can we invest, let's say, $500,000 in the water conservation program to see that water savings and hit the target eventually of 80 gallons per capita per day? One of the programs is exactly what you're talking about. It's a in-home water efficiency. We will come in and do a checkup for customers or we'll give them a kit to take home. We also do that for hotels, for for older hotels. We've worked with multifamily. We've actually worked with Councilmember House before she was on council. So we have that strong program, Councilmember Harris, to to help people in that situation where they have the older fixtures and they can't afford to swap them out, well, we'll give a rebate and we we try to help.
And Erin, the little drops that you put in the toilet tank that tells you if your toilet's leaking, you may not hear it. You just mentioned the rebate. So we do offer a rebate for people to switch out their toilets to a higher efficiency toilet, help them in that cause to upgrade. And a lot of people don't know if their toilet's leaking unless it makes a really insane noise. And so it's been, it just bleeds through into the toilet bowl. If it's leaking, it's very efficient.
So, but, I'm sorry, Mayor, may I? We keep, I hear people talk about rebates all the time, but what I don't hear people saying is that if I'm living on a fixed income and you're giving me a rebate, where do I get that money to pay that rebate? You know, I mean, I still have to pay something. So all I'm saying, and I'm not trying to take us down a rabbit hole, I'm just wanting us to think about how this affects all of our community. And that's all I'm saying is that we have to think this all the way through. And so, just a comment.
Councilmember House.
I'm not sure if this is helpful, and Carol or Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard exactly what you were saying about the, with the scenario that you gave, and I think that's what's coming up in the customer impact conversation more than this one. Because I think that the term equity and the breakdown into like the language of class and all of that, I think that's kind of what's shifting the the way that we're even looking at this category. And even like a phrase like intergenerational means something very different in like a traditional equity conversation than how it's being used here. So I I see what you're saying in the presentation, but I also hear what Councilmember Harris was saying. I think it's just the mixture of the language and the terminology. And I'm assuming this is just the terminology of the field. Is that correct?
Councilmember Harris, I mean, excuse me, House, you you are correct. That that is exactly what we've used. There is a document from a few years back that proposed these types of terms. But now that I'm hearing this discussion, I know that I that we should change this conversation to be proportionality instead of equity. Because that's really what this set of criteria are trying to focus on, is the, is the rate structure that you're looking at recovering costs proportionally across residential customers in whole, in totality versus commercial customers or your landscape meters versus your institutional customers. So are are each of those customers paying their proportional share under that rate structure? And then if you're looking within a class, is a low-water user paying their proportional share versus a higher? their proportional share versus a higher water user? And so is there, is your rate structure conducive to that proportionality? And then finally, the last one for intergenerational, we're talking about existing users versus new connections. And that approach, or that criterion is best and was discussed last week with your capacity fee discussion. So it's more of a, are costs being borne by existing customers versus future customers? So that's that proportionality. I'm gonna go back and change this language, and I appreciate the discussion though.
What, I mean, I don't, I don't have any idea about the language of this field, because every field has their own jargon, and so, whatever.
I think we, but thank you, because I think that's a, it's an excellent observation, and I, I am going to go back and recommend that we change how we speak to this. Any other comments about the proportionality of a, of these comments, these discussions?
I don't see any.
Thank you, Mayor. The rate design examples that I've included here are just using those same graphics we talked about before, that a uniform rate by class, so if there's a different rate by class, accomplishes that proportionality of costs being recovered between different classes and among different classes. So you have that right now with your current rate structure. You also have a proportionality within a class, within that residential class, because lower users pay a lower unit rate and higher water users pay a higher rate. And then you also have on the wastewater side with your, your current rate structure, you do have costs recovered based proportionally from those different classes of customers, based on how they, they caused the cost. The next category, I'm gonna be a little more careful about how I talk about this, because this is important too, the customer impact category. When we are speaking about affordability in context of rate structure, we're talking about the ability for a customer to influence the bill, the water bill or the total bill by adjusting water use. Now, in the example that Councilmember Harris gave regarding that inefficient, the inefficient appliances, that doesn't get addressed by this particular category. And it wouldn't get addressed by this rate structure. But a rate structure that has a, say, for example, a lower base charge, like this first design picture, would allow that customer to have a lower bill with lower water usage. But that, addressing affordability through a water rate design can be accomplished by, by evaluating how your rate design charges for the base charge versus the, the volume rates.
We have a question from Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in terms of our current residential tiers and looking at the residential rates, I'm just wondering where we fall in terms of the ability of of residents to actually adjust their use or, or attain more affordability in this? Because I, I think my real question is, what's the actual incentive of adjusting that water use at an assumed residential or lower residential use? When we have this tiered structure where folks that are in a, like, who have a higher household number are automatically gonna fall into those higher rates anyway? So they are not really able to reduce their, what they're paying for water. Is, is that making sense?
Councilmember House, yes, it is. And your, what, what we would say is that your current tiered structure for your residential customers gives that efficient water user or the low, fewer people per household or whatever that is, the water, lower water user, the lowest tier, just up to that 3,500 gallons. If you consider expanding that tier, like increasing it to a slightly higher amount, say 4,000 gallons, just as an example, then you would offer that first, that lower first tier rate to more households. This is just, I'm not trying to influence you, I'm just saying that would be an example for how you could encourage some customers to reduce their us- usage below 4,000 to 4,000 or below, or whatever that value might be to get the lower rate. Any level, though, a customer could, could reduce their bill by lowering their usage because they, they pay an amount per unit of use. So you use 2,000 gallons less water in a month, your bill will be less. So there still is an incentive in this inclining tier structure for customers to lower their water bill.
I can just follow up to that. Where this question is coming from for me really is a really interesting email that we received from a community member that talks about the impact to, you know, Flagstaff has a very unique housing situation where for the sake of affordability, we have households that have to double or even sometimes triple up to maintain affordability of the housing. But what that inadvertently results in, in the case of like a water rate is they're going to use more water and fall into one of those higher tiers because they have more households conserved into one. So no matter how much they're attempting to conserve, they're still falling into that higher tier, if that makes sense. So I, I think the question that I'm grappling with is how do we get to, and I can't think of any other term to use, but equitable distribution of that rate or of that impact? If, if that's the, the situation that folks are in just because of the nature of the cost of housing?
Mayor and Councilmember House, this is a, this is one of the challenges for any type of rate structure is that you, perfect equity is really difficult to, oh, I said equity. A perfect rate, rate structure is difficult to achieve in that way. I have, remember that more complex rate structure that I talked about, that was a water budget-based rate structure? That, one of the characteristics of that rate structure is often to base that first tier on a, an assumption of efficient water use per person, per household. And you, the, the customer has to report how many people they have in their household so that they can get that minimum allowance in that first tier. So Boulder, Colorado actually has that type of rate structure. There, with any rate structure, there's challenges because you have to have customers report. And if, say, they, they lose a household member or they become smaller, they're not going to come back to you and report that they have a smaller household size. Because then their water allowance or their water budget would be reduced. You know, so it's, it's a difficult and more complex rate structure to implement. That is one of the few rate designs that I've encountered that would allow you to account for the people per household. So that, in general, this tiered structure is, is probably the most common for, to try to accomplish that. And, and I don't know if you'll be able to, I don't know if I could come up with an example that would help with that housing issue. But that might be a, a different, a topic for a different focus, such as again, customer assistance programs or something like that. My apologies if I did not come up with a, you know, the satisfactory answer, but that's, the water budget rate design is the only one that I could think of that would partially achieve yet that objective.
That was a great answer. It's a, it's a tough question, so that was a good enough answer for, for the time. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, may I add to that? And Carol, I've been thinking about this and, and how we, one way we could address that is if we were to raise the lower tier higher. Let's say we were to put that at 7,000 gallons. We, the 30, the upper 3,500 gallons that are in that tier two right now, if that were in tier one, I calculated a savings of $6 a month. So we'd probably want to true that for March 4th. But when we talk about customer impacts, I get that $6 a month is, actually can be impactful to people, especially when that accumulates. But it might help with your decision when we look at the impact. So if we were to try to implement a more difficult rate structure, let's say, for customer service, how many people do, might be saving that $6 a month? I don't know. Just, I just thought that might be helpful because it helped me think through that.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Just to follow up to Councilmember House's comments, I think those are very legitimate concerns. But the other side of that coin is it gives me a flashback to when I was out gathering signatures to get on the ballot a few years ago. And there was a woman I talked to who was irate about how much her, her water bill was, and she was in tier four. Well, I was standing in her front yard. It was very obvious why she was in tier four. Because she had a very large lot and she had the whole thing covered with grass. And she did a lot of watering for that grass. And I don't know, I guess it's a value judgment, but do we want to subsidize that much, that much water usage just to grow that much grass? I would say no. So in that case, it doesn't bother me at all that a woman that uses that much water for, to grow that much grass is in tier four. I think it's fine. But I also hear your side of the point too. So, and I, I think the other comment we heard is there's no such thing as a perfect rate structure. There's always compromises and judgments, and we're, we really want to do the best thing. But there's no perfect solution. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions or comments.
Thank you very much for that. Excuse me, I'll just, we've got one more slide after this, and then we'll talk about your, what you liked and what you didn't like. So the, the other two criteria that we have on this slide are conservation. We've heard a lot about that. And we know that your current tiered rate structure provides a price signal or incentive to use less water. Because the higher you get in those tiers, if you are able to conserve, then you could lower your bill. So conservation is actually also tied, tied to affordability. Then the final criterion is bill stability. And this is where we look at a rate structure and rates that minimize monthly fluctuations in the bill. So of course, we have, typically on the water side, we have higher bills in the summer for water, to account for water usage. So those are typically expected and customers can plan for that. On the wastewater side, you might, the customers currently that are residential, actually we pay that same, probably the same bill every month because their monthly bills and their monthly wastewater usage is based on their winter month, winter water usage. So their, their bills are probably very stable. But some of your non-residential customers may see fluctuations in their sewer bills as a result. But there are, every, every example that I provided you, there's probably 10 other examples of different tweaks to, to a rate design that could achieve or, or meet these objectives. So we just tried to provide a few examples of these types of objectives. Let's talk about the last category, the administration category. And here we have administrative burden, complexity, and public and political acceptance. The administrative aspect is the cost effort and, and, you know, I use the word burden again, but burden to implement and maintain a rate structure. That water budget-based rate structure is a fantastic structure. It gives an individualized rate. But there are quite a few elements that need to be in place before you can have that type of rate structure. One of which is either a, an estimate of the irritable area of a customer's property or some sort of a, a GIS or flyover of vegetation in a customer's yard. So that woman that might have a really green and large lot would actually get a larger budget for that lot unless you made some decision. So I'm going into way too much detail on that, but there's a lot of effort to establish that type of rate structure. The easiest and lowest burden is to keep your staying rate structure, but you may not want to do that. The complexity of a rate structure is important and customer understanding is important because your customer service and water services staff have to explain components of the rate structure, or if customer has a question about their bill, we want to make sure that the public can understand this rate structure and, and what their rates are, or how their rates are telling them or informing them of the cost to serve them. And then finally, public and political acceptance. This is a necessary criterion that we want to make sure that you agree with this rate structure and that the public accepts the rate structure. There are, we have been supporting some utilities that have gotten challenged on their rates. And if we are, if they're legally defensible, that challenge is not, does not hold up. But we want to definitely make sure that at the beginning, this is a, a necessary condition for establishing a rate structure. So I'm checking that off, that that is a given. Just in a, a few rate design examples that demonstrate in, well, rate structure, that flat rate per month is the most simple rate structure. But that may not meet what you want in the other proportionality because you would charge different customers the same rate per month. So that's probably not where you want to go. I think that would be a backwards move from where your rate structure is now. And then the uniform rate by class is also very easy to administer, and you also have that on your water rate structure for non-residential customers. That was, so that, those are all the objectives that I'd like to talk to you about in this next step. And this is where we are going to ask you for your priorities so that we can go back, prepare these rate structures, and present you the rates and the impacts on bills. So this table has been condensed. It's the same table I presented a few slides ago. But it has the, only has the criteria that we have, don't have checkmarks next to. And as an example of how I'd like to talk through this with you, I'd like to ask, like to ask Shannon to come up and help me talk through Water Services objectives. This slide also has a column for Water Commission, so we'd like to walk Water Commission through this exercise on Thursday as well.
Would this be a good time to take questions and comments from a couple of council members? So Councilmember Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sometimes I know that I can go down, is like, my favorite phrase these days is rabbit holes, and I can take us down those. But I think that the conversation about equity cannot not be had, double negative, bad idea to do that, but whatever. We have to have these have these conversations, um, in everything that we do, because lots of different people live in our community. And so I know that this is a hard conversation to have. I know that this rate structure is important. I'm not asking us to, to do anything different. What I'm asking us to do is to think about how this affects every member in our community. Perhaps this is a conversation that we might have with our nonprofits to see what it is that they can do to help, because we know that the people that I talk about or that I'm talking about live in our community. We also, we probably know some of them. You know, they've probably come up to us and spoken to us at events or whatever, to council members here. So it's just not me, you know, that's bringing, that have people talking to me. I think that all of us have people talking to us about their concerns about living in Flagstaff and the community and the cost of living and all of that. And so what I'm asking us to do is to try and, and, and think a little bit outside the box in terms of how we address the needs of our community members. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we change this rate structure or that we do anything special for anyone, but maybe we try and look at resources or places that we can direct people. Maybe we have conversations with nonprofits who receive city dollars to do a whole bunch of different things. And maybe that's where this issue lands, is helping, asking them to help people, um, who may need some extra support or assistance. And so I'm probably going to keep dragging us down rabbit holes, if that's okay with folks, because I think it's important that we think about this. And I'm not trying to preach at anybody or say anyone is not thinking about that. But these are the things that weigh heavy on me when I go home and leave this dais at night. And so I just want my colleagues to, to, to maybe see a little bit of my heart, um, because I was one of those people, uh, at one point in time. And so I have a real, uh, empathy for people who may be in those situations, uh, and not having the funds that I needed to do the things that was good for me and, and my son. So anyway, that's, that's my soapbox. Um, and that's all I wanted to say, Mayor. Thank you for the time and for, uh, council for listening to me and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was gonna start with my, what I'm gonna say now last, but I'll just kind of add on to what Councilmember Harris said. Um, I just keep going back to feeling like, um, we have competing priorities and maybe it can't be helped, but, um, you know, the, the cost of living up here and the cost of housing and, um, you know, I just feel like, you know, we, we haven't felt the, um, effects of our stormwater rate increases. And I know all these sayings, most of them are necessary, um, but I just struggle with them because we have a housing crisis. And, um, you know, when we're gonna do, uh, we talked about, uh, impact fees, is that what it, capacity fees, you know, just passing those increases on to the cost of a new house build, um, well, that makes our houses less affordable. Another 10 grand pop or 15. Um, I don't know how to avoid it, but I want to feel like we considered it and considered it in our decisions moving forward on, um, so customer impact will probably be, um, really where I fall. But, um, you know, and, and, and maybe some people will be fine with it because it's a, another way to obtain a no-growth, uh, policy if people can't live here, stay here, move here. Um, but it does bother me, and I just wanted to share that, that, um, I struggle with that. And I feel like more understanding or, or maybe more focus or deep dive to try to see if we can make those two priorities, infrastructure needs and, um, the, the needs of, of our housing affordability can somehow come together a little bit more. Um, what I'd like to see, um, and, and again, thank you, Erin, for sending those draft, uh, sheets out to me, but they did say that, uh, the totals that were given, um, on replacing aged-out infrastructure versus new development, some would be paid by rates, some would be paid by, um, uh, loans, you know, through, through bonds, and some with state and federal, uh, funding. But what I didn't get, and, and this is just me, because I'm a numbers person, um, is like, I don't know if these rate increases and these rate proposals, where that breakdown was. And I'd like to see it to say, well, we're assuming that, um, you know, 25% is, is what we're going, of all those costs, we need to lay on the ratepayers. Um, and, and what does that look like? Or is that not the case? Um, because they were just generalized numbers and stuff. And I would just, I think would help me feel more comfortable in bringing this to our community. Um, we've taken a lot of hits up here. Um, and some things I know are unavoidable, but right now I don't feel like I have the visual in my mind of what's tied into specifically those rate increases. Um, is it 100% of the CIP? Um, or is it, you know, 25% of all the CIP or 50%? So I, I, I would like the answer to that. And then, so that was statements. And then my question is, um, because I've seen the speed of government more, more clearly than I ever have before here. And I see projects that have been approved through bonds and, and it, then it takes two more decades to do. Um, realistically, if we were able to just say, we have the funds to do everything, um, on our needs list, um, can we get all that stuff done in 10 years, um, with this rate structure? Or no, we still, because I know the cost of construction, the cost of materials and stuff. I know we're gonna have those conversations a lot. We're like, well, we budgeted for 100 million and now with the cost of materials and the cost of, you know, workforce, um, we need another 20 million. Um, but is there any thought, I know you have thought about this a lot. I don't mean it like that. But can you give me a number, like, can you say, well, if we were able to do all these projects that we need in, in, in the future and now, we can accomplish all of them in five years, 10 years, 20 years? Is there a number there that you could give us?
Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, um, like specifically towards water, I would say 10 years. Um, and so based on the information that we went through, the development, that does put your capital spending at $20 million a year, right? You would have to achieve $20 million a year of capital spending. When you look at the projects, you're right, a project could take multiple years, but also there are projects that could be over $20 million. Um, so again, that is, um, that is achievable.
Any other comments or questions? All right, take us through.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so, um, so, so I was supposed to go ahead and speak on some of maybe the objectives that Water Services has, uh, from the rate study, which is very interesting that the presentation laid out all of the objectives from Water Services. But, but I think more specifically, uh, going back to, uh, we, we talked about the, the rate, the rate stabilization, um, and that there are conflicting, there are conflicting objectives. I think more importantly that there's a cause and effect. And I think that we're looking to look through the objectives to see which ones, um, which ones can we move all in and move the needle? And which one do we know that there's a cause and effect? And are we making compromises? Are we trying to find that balance? Uh, but I think specifically when I think of restability, uh, specifically for Water Services, trying to address that we can pay the reoccurring costs with reoccurring money. Um, so I know we've talked about that last year through the budget development. We'll be talking about that this year through the budget development, where we're having to take one-time funds and cover reoccurring costs and say, we'll worry about that cost again next year and we'll find it again. The stability I'm looking for is that that's not the case. Um, that, that we know that there's reoccurring costs and the reoccurring revenue has to, has to be there. I know we spend a lot of time focusing on, uh, conservation and conservation is one of our objectives. That one's on my list. But know about how that attaches back to the rate stability is that it's always not just conservation. And I think we kind of touch on some of those objectives, that it could be the individuals that has the very lush lawn and, and chooses to, um, use that amount of water and then complain about what it costs, all the way to the other scenario where they don't have a lawn, right? And it's just how much water that they have to use. There's a cause and effect there, right? And, and there is not a perfect rate study that addresses both of those. Um, and so where do you find that balance? But also from a Water Services, that conservation is not just the only thing that impacts, um, the race ability. And so I think, uh, Carol did touch on a few, and I think having come out of last year and even into the year we're currently experiencing, weather is a major factor. Um, so sometimes you will hear, when you're in the business of selling water, right, and it's falling free from the sky, not a lot of people buying your water. You will see demands drop. Even when you look at the chart over the last 20 years, 30 years, and you see these fluctuations, I would also challenge, like, overlay your precipitation for that year, because when it is a wetter year, your consumption is down. When your rates are solely based on the volumetric charge, your rates will go down. And those principles that we talk about, those fixed costs, the things that you have to do anyway, um, they either get deferred when you're waiting for the revenues, um, and you have to pick and choose. So when, when Councilmember Harris says things, um, this resonated with me, where, um, you're personally talking about being in a point of time where you're saying, like, we don't happen to have enough funds to do the things that's right for you or for your son. Um, that's what I kind of heard you saying. I'm, I have empathy for that. Um, I wrote that down because that resonates, because every day, right, we're working through running a utility where there's the right thing that we need to do for the utility, for the community, for the city, and, and not having the funds to do the right thing. And there's things you're putting off doing, um, right? And you have to choose. And it's easy for people to say, well, you just need to prioritize. You just need to prioritize. But after a while, like, there's only so many things you can prioritize. And so I do get that this is a hard conversation to have. And I would never play that down. But that rate stability, our ability to do the things that we say we're gonna do, um, like, that's critical for us, right? That's how we measure our success. Um, so again, one of our initiatives is also the conservation. I think, um, the next one that I had was our ability to implement, to implement the structure. Um, how we read the meters, how it's pushed into our billing system, how our staff, um, gets that information, how we do that. It, it has to work that way. If we build a structure that we can't implement, I don't think that helped any of us. So that was one of, um, what I thought was our, um, our objectives is that whatever rate structure we come up with, whether it's the same one or something different, we have to have the ability to implement it. And, uh, the last one that I chose was also the simplicity, because Carol's right, on any given day, I'm expected to explain what's happening, when does it occurs, how does it work? Um, and the more simple it is, then the better we can do that. The more complex it gets, um, that is a challenge. So when, when you have 12 different customer classifications, and each of those classifications is asking me why they're different for someone else, um, those are hard answers. They're hard to defend. You spend a lot of time about how the math adds up. Um, not saying that that's not how we look, but as an objective, I, I would look through a lens of seeing, are there ways that we can simplify that, um, to move forward? So I feel like those were, and again, I had the advantage because Carol gave me this exercise right before everyone else. Um, right? But what are those four things? And those are the four things that, um, I would say from Water Services would be the objectives to the rate structure. And thank you for allowing me to share that. And we're definitely more interested in hearing your objectives. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, thank you, Shannon. I think, uh, that makes a lot of sense from your perspective, what you've shared. I'm not really sure how this graph chart is working. Um, I don't know if we're just checking things off or if we're ranking them. I was sort of, uh, considering more of a ranking, uh, because I would check every one of these boxes, obviously. Um, so the way I'm thinking about it is somewhat similar, at least at the top. Um, I think revenue stability is the most important factor for me. So if you're gonna rank this stuff, put a one there. Uh, you know, it, it goes back to what I've said before. Um, the cost of doing business is never going to be cheaper than it is today. And so making sure we have the revenues to do these things, um, when, when they're necessary to do, is, is the responsible way for us to move forward. Uh, you know, my old campaign slogan was solving tomorrow's problems today. And I, I think this comes into play here a little bit. I don't want to see these, these costs deferred. I, it's, 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 it's akin to kicking the can down the road and making it someone else's problem. I think a lot of the issues we're dealing with, um, are landing on us because, uh, you know, not to throw anyone under the bus, but, uh, a litany of past councils wasn't able to rise to the challenge of meeting the goal here without, uh, you know, and, and dealing with the discomfort that comes from the public on it. Anyway, I don't want to ramble too far about that, but I do think revenue, uh, if we're gonna do, we're, we're doing this at all, it's because we need the revenue. Um, so I want to keep that top of mind. Next for me, uh, I don't exactly know how to, I'm, I'm, I'm confused between, at least the terminology, interclass and intra-class. What I will say is I do like volumetric pricing. I do think that we should reward conservation. I think it makes a lot of sense that if people are using this water, they should be in a cheaper tier. Um, I've, I've always maintained that philosophy. I, I believe I'm similar to Councilmember McCarthy in that regard. Um, so that's very important to me. And then, uh, the, the equity, uh, is important to me as well, but I'm, 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 I don't want to spend too much time trying to parse between those two at this time. Uh, I, I, what I'll say is that, uh, the scenario that Councilmember House, uh, raised, um, was very interesting to me. Uh, and we should be mindful of, of those things. Uh, and also the scenario that, the picture that, uh, Councilmember Harris painted, um, is absolutely very important, and I want to keep that top of mind as well. So of less importance to me, I understand why administrative burden was important to our administrator. Um, for me, it's, it's, it's obviously essential that we keep half a mind on that and that we, we provide our administrators and our leadership the tools they need to be successful in framing what's happening and explaining to the public, um, how all this works. Uh, but I believe that is a task that we can tackle regardless of how complicated all the other things get. So that's not something I'm worried about at this stage. Uh, I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. That's perfect. That's perfect. And that's exactly what I hope to do for, for the, for everyone that would like to. And I appreciate your comments, too. Um, one of the things that I just want to throw out there in relation to, and I don't want to, again, go down a tangent, but in relation to the information that, um, Councilmembers House and Harris gave us, I think that we could talk, and Erin and Shannon, we could talk about this offline, about the concept of a customer assistance program that could address these things. There are a lot of utilities that have, uh, say they have leak detection programs. They have, um, any kind of levels of low-income discounts or customer assistance for one-time needs or whatever that might be, like a job loss or, or something like that. So we can address those or help to address those types of equity concerns through a, a different component rather than the rate design. So I'm just gonna put that in as an aside. But thank you very much for your, for your assessment here. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Shannon, you, you give a compelling argument, um, after your analysis and, and argument. Well, Shannon, you, you give a compelling argument after your analysis and, and argument. I, I do agree for revenue stability, just in a projection and being able to figure out what projects you can do and stuff, having that instability is not good. I also then agree on the conservation and demand management. And the administrative burden, absolutely, if we don't have the staff to produce all these things, then, you know, we're going down the wrong direction. Where I'm struggling is, and maybe I, I need a re-refresher on interclass equity. You know, I would say affordability and maybe that's contrary to conservation and demand management. But, you know, if we could factor that in, affordability would probably be my fourth ranking choice. Understanding that maybe the equity portion, I need to revisit and better understand it. But I'll leave it at that. Those are my four.
Thank you very much.
I have a question about administrative burden. Doesn't, or does that reference what you showed us earlier in terms of complicating or complicated structures, right? And I don't know if council is interested in going back to that slide or whether it's even necessary. I think that the point was if you want to get more complex with, with these structures and with the tiers, then that adds a whole other layer on, on top in terms of administrative burden. Am I correct?
Mayor, yes, you're correct. I think maybe to help kind of frame it a little bit more, I think a good, a good example of what we'd be referring to is, so currently, all the meter information goes into the billing system. It determines how much your bill is, prints the bills and sends them out. Our current billing system will have limitations. And so when Carol talks about other communities that do, like maybe more elaborate type rate structures, I would also assume that they don't, they're not using the same billing system. But if we come up with a rate structure that the billing system can't support, it doesn't have the ability to, to drill down to determine how many people live in a household. I would say our billing system doesn't have that ability. So if we create a rate structure that we want to do that, immediately we come out of the gate with, we don't have the ability to build that. So I think that's one example of where we talk about that administrative burden. It doesn't mean that we can't, so if there was a direction, probably wouldn't be reflected in the rate structure, would, would be my preference. But if that's a direction we wanted to move, then it would send staff on a path to determine how do I evolve those administrative obstacles in order to move that direction. But what I would not want to occur is that we pause, right? That we pause the, the rate study in order, because again, a billing system, right? That could take four or five years to, to implement. But so right now, that would be one, one example. Or to think that, that there's a customer service rep that's looking at every, I think I looked at the graph, it was like 16,000 residential bills every month. They don't look at every 16,000 bills. I think they run reports, they look at high-low reports. They're looking at, like, there's things they're trying to do, but each bill is not customly made, right? It's, it has to be through that system. In order to ramp up to do that type of level of service, what would that look like? And again, so not to defer from that. So I think when we go back to Stantuck to say, present us with the best scenarios of rate structures to accomplish the objectives that we're identifying now, like, that's what we're asking you to do. I would be asking them, but don't bring me a rate structure that I can't implement. Because that didn't help me, we'll have to do something else. So hopefully that helps a little bit. I think there's probably two or three other nuances that staff could probably add. But I felt like that was a good example of, of kind of a deal breaker on a, on a current rate structure. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I'm going to take a stab at this. Thank you for bringing up the revenue stability. I think that would be my top as well, helping us plan for the future. And I'm struggling between affordability and the conservation. And what I would like to request is that somehow we marry the two. The small businesses, our community, we're all struggling as it is. And so I think we need to keep the affordability in mind. And I'm also very much in favor of the conservation and saving our water for future needs. And the administrative burden, I do feel like we need to keep things as simple as possible. I'm not interested in looking at complex formulas and having to hire staff to figure that out per household. And I really like the idea of the customer assistance programs and maybe looking into that for our community members. So that's where I'm at right now.
Councilmember House?
Okay, I'm going to give this a shot. So for me, actually, it was the complexity and customer understanding that was number one. Because in my understanding of that slide, I understood that, that came with the overall admin category. And I think for me, at least, and it just in my understanding of that part of the presentation, it's important for us to understand the administrative burden, but it's also very important that our community understands everything that goes into that. So in my mind, I think I kind of paired the two as the top priority is ensuring that understanding. For me, number two then was the revenue stability. Number three was both affordability and conservation. And number four was both points under equity.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm not going to try to digitize the analog world and try to make my comments fall into the format of this table. I'm just going to make my comments and you can decide where to put the little numbers. I think the first thing that I want to say is we need to cover our costs. There's things that need to get done. We've talked about that. And whatever rate structure we come up with, that's number one. You got to cover your costs. My next point is that I think we should keep the structure essentially as it is now. Now, that, that means the ratios would be the same, but, you know, there would be increased costs because inflation and these added needs. But basically, similar to the charts we saw today, keep the structure essentially as is and increase costs as required proportionally. However, I would be open-minded to maybe lowering the base charges. And of course, that would mean that the, the, there'd be a proportionate higher cost on the, you know, per gallon usage. And I understand that the trade-off there is stability of, of income to the, to the service. And why do I make that suggestion? I think it addresses two things. One is conservation, because it will encourage conservation if you charge more per gallon use. And also it'll address the issue of some people don't have a lot of money and they need to figure out some way they can save. Well, one way they can save is by turning the faucet off. I've watched people brush their teeth and they leave the water flowing the whole time they're brushing their teeth. You know, as an example. So that's kind of where my head is at. I hope that answers some kind of questions that's in somebody's mind. I see grins, so I guess I'm okay.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you're okay. I'm going to take a stab at this. So I would do revenue stability as my number one. Affordability is important and, but I'm not sure I want to put that as my number two. I just made that comment. Conservation, demand, management, maybe that's my number two. And then administrative burden is my number three. I'm just going to go ahead and bite that bullet, so, and say that. And then one last comment is that I'm not looking for us to take on any more projects. I think we have enough on our plate in terms of customer, whatever. I think we have a lot of nonprofits out there that are acquiring city funds and maybe these kinds of programs or assistance or support falls within their area. And so maybe the idea is to have a conversation or ask for our nonprofits to assist those folks that may need some support and assistance if, you know, whatever we decide. So that's not something that, you all have enough on your plate to figure out. So I think there's some other way we can do that. So anyway, just my two cents.
I'm interested in you all looking at the number of out-of-city water customers and the circumstances around those. I don't know what the arrangements were made, why arrangements were made. And I'm not saying that I think that they should be charged more. I think it would, it would depend on the circumstances, why we're providing water to them. The same with reclaimed water. Just, I, I'm interested in what the circumstances are. With every, just about everyone else, revenue stability is definitely my number one. And conservation, I would say is number two. And maybe 2.2 is affordability. And, and of course, administrative burden. I wouldn't want to see you come back with some kind of structure that our current software doesn't, can't compute. And the complexity and customer understanding, I think that that's really important as well. And I know that, I know that we can get there. But, but I do think that as we're rolling this out, just in, in general, helping people to understand why they're, why the bills are increasing and what we're all getting from that increase is going to be really important.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I'd, I'd like to make a, a quick comment about reclaimed water. I think a lot of people think of reclaimed water as, oh, it's just trash, get rid of it, somebody will use it, who cares? Well, actually, there's another viewpoint. In the long run, that's our next water supply. Be it through direct reuse or through putting it back into the aquifer and pumping it back out. So this idea that we should, you know, just give it away, and I don't like, because it gets people in the habit of thinking they have this source of water forever to, you know, water lawns or whatever. And it's like, oh, it's free water. No, it isn't. It's important water. And Brad Hill has said this once, water is water is water. And we will need that water for our drinking water supply at some point. So it's not a good idea to get people in the habit of using it as if it were free. Thank you.
So do you feel that you have enough direction and understand what council's thinking?
Mayor and members of council, I, I do. I think this is fantastic. This is exactly what I hope we would, and have you talk through these things. I know, please pardon my writing, but I've also been taking side notes on who said what as well. So this, what we will do now is we'll use this information. And you are clearly interested in revenue stability, conservation, affordability and administrative burden, which are those top priorities for you, which we will use to come back with slight changes to the rate structure. Large changes, it, it doesn't sound like all of you are interested in something majorly different. So slight changes, perhaps to tweak the, the ability of the structure to meet these objectives are needed. So along with the current rate structure. So I, I think this is great. I'm actually really excited about how you talked through it and I appreciate your time and attention to this. So I am going to, this, this does give us enough information to go back. And we can, we're going to come back to you and to the Water Commission on March 4th. But before we talk about those next steps, Erin has some, some updates for you on the communications plan. If you bear with me, oh, there we go. Erin, can I switch back over to you for a few minutes?
Carol, thank you and, and Mayor and council, that's a lot of work y'all just went through. Thank you so much. And I do have one, since we're here. I heard Councilmember McCarthy bring up reclaimed water. And the policy is it's set at 35% of potable. And we're all here. I don't, I don't know, Mayor, if, if you want to hear from any other council members on reclaim. It didn't necessarily really fit into the proposal from Carol on objectives. Is that an objective we should address and bring back on March 4th? Anything you might want to see different?
In terms of what, like different rates?
Well, it's set at 35% of potable. One adjustment is if you would want to make an adjustment to that 35% number or... And I'm only saying that so that it doesn't come up on March 4th and then we're addressing it later. Is that something you all want to discuss right now?
Well, I don't know how difficult the modeling would be to, to look at it. I, of course, I already said I'm interested in it. Not necessarily interested in changing the rate structure, but just how it looks compared to the other revenue sources. And maybe in the meantime, thinking if we could actually get, not necessarily by name, but maybe types of users of the reclaimed water. So we could think about, I mean, we obviously don't want to raise rates to the point where they're wanting to use potable water, right? But I'm interested. I don't know if anyone else is. Councilmember Matthews, then McCarthy?
And I apologize for my ignorance in this still, but wasn't this a question you asked at a meeting? And I think Scottsdale, was that in the same type of water treatment? And they've spent a million, a billion dollars on their reusable water and they're still not able to deliver it to the customers because it doesn't meet the standards? Is, is that what we're talking about here?
Well, I'll make two comments. Do you mind? Okay, I didn't want to jump the gun. Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, two items. One is, one is just how much should we charge for reclaimed water? And that's really unrelated to what I learned in Scottsdale. But just briefly, when we did our tour of Scottsdale Water Treatment Plant, I asked the administrator, I says, well, you put your reclaimed water back into the aquifer, but not until you've run it through reverse osmosis, which is, you know, advanced treatment. And his response was, no, we don't want to contaminate our aquifer. Now, the other side of this, and I'm sure Eric can talk for an hour about it, is that's very expensive. And Scottsdale had the luxury of the golf courses actually paying for most of it. And the reason they did was not because of the same reason as I'm concerned about, you know, chemicals of emerging concern, estrogen, whatever, that's left in the water. Their concern was, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the nitrates were too high and it was causing problems on the golf course. and it was causing problems on the golf courses. So they were willing to subsidize the cost of reverse osmosis. Am I pretty close there?
Yeah, pretty close. The Central Arizona Project water is really high in salts and they wanted to reduce that to not, yes, salts and other nitrates.
So it's mostly salts as opposed to nitrogen. Thank you.
So then, to clarify, discussing a percentage increase, what does that, what is the end goal there? What does that accomplish?
It's just reclaimed water rates are at your discretion. And I may, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole. I just, I feel it's coming from the water, several in the Water Commission. If you wanted to discuss the 35%, if that's where you want to be or if you want to...
Yeah, and I'm not talking about any additional capital improvement projects. I'm talking about, are our rates set correctly for all the different types of water? And that includes reclaim, so, okay. I think that's fine direction. I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that I think we have three councilmembers at least that would like to talk about it. And now I just heard that members of the Water Commission want to talk about it. And since it'll be a joint meeting, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. All right, Carol, we're ready. Now we're to the fun part. Well, I think it's fun. I think it's fun, community outreach. We've got a number of folks working hard on community outreach. We're coming up to the point in time where we were getting the information out to the public. You know, we, I touched on January 30th and 31st, we had the drop-ins. We had an open rate of the emails to all the developers of 62 and 71%. So the developers were getting the emails. We had, we talked to two developers during those drop-in meetings. We had, I had coffee with the Downtown Business Alliance business owner last week. Got some great perspective from that person. We're meeting with the Chamber of Commerce on Thursday. And we're still reaching out to schedule additional community group meetings. So let us know if there's anyone you'd like us specifically to talk with and we were happy to. We just formulated today with our community outreach team, a town hall meeting on March 11th. So following your direction on March 4th with the Water Commission, you know, you're going to see some rate alternatives. What are we thinking we're going to roll out to the public? We'll present that to the public in that town hall type meeting. On next slide. And Water Awareness Month, Arizona's, it's probably 25 years now. Our water conservation team hits that month hard for tabling and other efforts. So that's an opportunity for Shannon Jones to show up at all these, he's great at these events, by the way, talking with the public. But we're going to join water conservation and have a table next to them. We'll have rate study information, a lot of fact sheets. Sarah Langley's team is working on handouts and posters. And so these are the events we're planning to be at now. On April 16th, I noted the point in time where you will be asked to adopt a notice of intent to change rates and fees. That starts that, it's about a two to three months long process of adopting, you know, eventually the first read and the second read will be in June and July. So we kind of kicked that process off in mid-April. So by that time, we'll be hearing from a lot of customers and having a lot of interactions. And next slide. You, council, you've given us quite a bit of feedback on the couple of fact sheets that we've made. We're updating the website. We've made a lot of recent updates. Shannon Anderson and Sarah Langley and Ralph Schmid. We're just trying to look at it from the perspective of our customers coming to the website and is the information there where it makes sense? And so we're working on the website. We now have a QR code we'll be sharing on our materials. I have a couple more fact sheets that I've identified tonight. I won't go through them because I think we're getting tired, but I did jot them all down. And next slide. And just a list of outreach materials that our Public Affairs Group is, is working on. And Mayor, we read your article in the Flagstaff Business News. So thank you for making that plug for the rate study. We'll be adding that to our website as a resource link. And I think that's all I have, Carol, for my slides. And I'm glad to take any feedback on public outreach website.
You all just on the regular do an outstanding job with public outreach. I would love to see a costume like Sustainability has, maybe a water droplet and Shannon could wear it.
We have our toilet costume, our running toilet.
Yeah, okay. Either one, either one. Council, do you have any input ideas for outreach?
Just make sure that we try and cover as much of our community as we can. Those folks that typically don't come to us, how can we go to them? So I know that's difficult. You can't, you know, you can take the horse to water, but you can't make them drink.
And if, you know, if there's a neighborhood canvassing you want, I'll do whatever I'm asked to do, quite honestly. So if you want me to hit a neighborhood in passing, though...
No, I do not want you walking door to door. But, you know, but, but, but there may be some options that we can exercise. You know, we have plenty of volunteers. Maybe we can take stuff around, you know, to them. So put our volunteers to, to work in some way. I'm just trying to make sure that we cover our bases and make sure that people know that there's an opportunity for them to, to hear what we're doing. So, you know, if they come back later and say, "Well, you didn't tell me", you know, we can say, "No, these are all the things that we did." And we try to, you know, to get to every part of our community and that's all I'm asking.
I like that you mentioned the volunteers because we do have that city volunteer program. So, great idea.
What about putting it in the water bills?
It is in the water bills and we're about to change it. Yeah, and see who looks at the water bills. Yeah.
Great. I'm glad.
And Carol, is that, do we have, I think, just?
We have one more slide and this would be just what you get to look forward to. This Thursday for the Water Commission meeting, we're going to do the same presentation and request their feedback. But on March 4th is where we'll come together in that joint meeting. And this, at this point, we will have, you've already seen the, the current rates and the impact on customers. But we'll provide two to three alternatives for water and wastewater so that you, excuse me, reclaimed, so that you could see and, and give us direction on which alternatives you prefer. There will be future opportunities for direction, so that's not the, your final answer. We have on your calendars, I think we have the March 25th session, that could be another joint discussion session. During all this time, STANTEC and staff will be working on the, the calculations, of course, but the reports and documentation of the study. There, if you have additional policy topics you'd like to cover, we could come back and discuss those before April 16th, which would be that, as Erin mentioned, the date. We've backed up from the final date that the new rates will be effective. With Rick Tatters' help, we backed up from September 1st to April 16th, which would be where we request that you adopt the notice of intention to change rates and fees. June 18th and July 2nd will be those public hearings on the rates then. So that, that period will be the public hearing component. And that is it for tonight. And I really appreciate you being, giving great feedback and being really responsive tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all your work. And staff, wow, thank you. I know that, that this has been a huge burden on top of your everyday work, so thank you. All right. Moving down, moving down, we already did public participation.